I'm Vice Mayor Mark Bunker. Mayor Ongst couldn't be here tonight, so I will be conducting the meeting. If you wish to address the council, please complete a comment card, and you can find those tonight over here by the podium with the microphone. That's where you'll be speaking. And then, once you fill out the card, just drop it off on the stage here in front of our City Clerk Rosemary Call, and we'll gather those up for you. And now, if you wouldn't mind, please stand for the invocation to be given by Reverend Dr. Rhonda Blevins from Chapel by the Sea, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray together. Eternal God, we gather here today in humble reverence, seeking your divine guidance and wisdom upon these, our city leaders, and upon the citizens gathered here this evening. We come before you with grateful hearts, acknowledging your bountiful mercy and compassion for all your children, and especially those who are recovering from the devastating losses from Hurricane Idalia, and those in our community who are in desperate need of affordable housing. Oh God, we bow our heads and we lift our voices in prayer for those who have been affected by the fury of the hurricane, and we ask for your presence to envelop them in their trial, soothing their pain, and granting them the resilience to restore their homes. We also ask you, oh God, to look upon those within our city who yearn for the stability of a safe and affordable place to call home. Your word teaches us that we are to care for the vulnerable and marginalized among us, and today we lift up the hearts and aspirations of those who seek shelter and security. Blessed these here this evening, taking their oath of service as firefighters, ready to face danger, to protect the citizenry, we'll pray that you bless them, bless their families, keep them safe as they serve our city. And God, as our leaders deliberate and make decisions in this temporary chamber, may your divine light illuminate all minds and hearts, guide each of us in our efforts to serve the common good, and extend our hands in love and compassion to all people. Help us to be good stewards of the resources entrusted to us, using them to uplift and empower those who are in need, and may all decisions made here tonight be a reflection of your love, bringing healing, restoration, and hope to our beloved city and its inhabitants. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Blevins. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, I want to take a moment just to thank Ruth Eckert-Hall for allowing us to use this space. That's one of the unique aspects of tonight's meeting. And it's great to see how easily the staff can pull together and accomplish something when we have what we have at the library here tonight. There was some water damage. That shows the importance of keeping up the infrastructure and making sure we maintain our properties, and we have an army of people to do that. So, thank you all. I'd like to recognize everyone here on the dais. Let's start off down here with our city attorney.
Hi, good evening, David Margolis.
And city clerk, Rosemary Call.
Good evening.
City manager, Jennifer Poyer.
Good evening.
Councilmember Beckman.
Good evening.
Councilmember Poyer.
Councilmember Teshayda.
Teshayda, oh, there we go, yeah. I thought I recognized you. And councilmember David Alberdin.
Good evening.
All right, well, we have some fire oaths to give tonight, so can I have Fire Chief Scott Ellers come up, please?
Good evening, vice mayor, council. It is my pleasure to introduce our newest hires with CFR. I think this is the first time that we've done this here, at least for me it is. So please bear with me as we go through this, and you know, I got Mr. Slaughter here, who has done it so many times, I may tag out with him at one point. He does a great job at it. But if I may, before we go through those that are standing in front of you, I'd like to do a personal invite for any citizens that are out there that would love to participate in our remembrance of those lives lost on September 11th. As in the past, we conducted it at every one of our fire stations at about 9:45, if they would like to stop by, anyone, doesn't matter, and participate in that moment of silence. So with that, I'll move on. So from your right to left, we'll start off with our firefighter EMTs, which is a little bit different than we've done in the past. We've mostly hired firefighter medics, but we're, again, as we have the changing job environment, we're trying to adjust. First is Fisher Davis. This is his first job as a firefighter. He has been an EMT for about a year and has spent most of his life in the Clearwater area. Next is Jose Kionas. This is also his first job as a firefighter. He was previously an automotive technician for seven years and went to school for EMS and firefighter while working as a technician. Next to him is Tristan Robey, also a first job as a firefighter. He graduated from Anclode High School June of 2021, went straight to the Fire Academy in August of '21, finished his EMT school in December of '22. He enjoys spending free time with his son and hanging out with his family. Last of the firefighter EMTs is Zachary Watt. This also is his first job as a firefighter, and he is currently enrolled in medic school, which is a good thing, which all of them will be at one time. In his free time, he enjoys spearfishing, hunting, and relaxing. The next are fire medics. First is Sean Binion. He comes to us with four years' experience with Pope County Fire Rescue. Glad to have him. Next is Docho Floro. He comes to us from Pope County Fire Rescue as well. He was born and raised in Bulgaria, left his country when he was 19, and came to America in Boston. As he says, he's worked every single job there was, that you didn't need a diploma, and decided that there must be more than that. So he decided to pursue this career. Welcome to, glad to have him on board. Next to him is Joseph Jamadi. He originally from Illinois. He comes to us from Seminole as a new paramedic, and he's been a certified firefighter since November. He's a big Chicago Cubs and Blackhawks fan. We'll change that for the Rays and the Lightning. But he is also, he comes from a police family. Next to him is William Ramsey. Again, first fire job, has been a paramedic for many years in the Army as a combat medic. Currently, he is in the Florida Army National Guard and a member of a squad that specializes in mass casualty incidents and hazmat. Next to him is Michael Sadek. He comes to us from Pinellas Park as a new paramedic as well. Then there's Nick Stedman, also a new medic, who also came from Pasco County Fire Rescue. And lastly, William Thomas. He comes to us from Pasco Fire Rescue as well, and when he started his career in 2019, and prior to that, he was an electrician. With that, I will ask our city clerk, Ms. Rosemary Call, if she would like to provide them with the oath of office.
Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida and the Charter and Laws of the City of Clearwater, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Charter and Laws of the City of Clearwater, and that I will, well and faithfully, perform the duties of firefighter and fire medic on which I'm now about to enter. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats. All right. Can we get approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And now it's time for citizens to be heard. Again, if you haven't already, grab one of those cards, put your name on it, state your name, and you have three minutes to talk. Our city clerk here is going to be holding up her hands when we come to the 10-second mark.
Yes, so when you see me hold up the hands 10 seconds, you've got 10 seconds before it goes off.
You can fill those out after you speak. Just make sure you drop it off here. Go ahead, you have your three minutes.
I was filling out the cards.
And you're not ready to speak yet?
We ready?
Yeah.
All right, good.
State your name.
Yes, sir. I know the deal. All right. You got time?
I will raise my hands when it's 10 seconds left. You got three minutes.
Three minutes, starting now?
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Michael Taylor. I'm from Port St. Lucie, Florida. Just so we get some background of this, I came to Clearwater Beach. I came here open-carrying while fishing, hunting, and camping under the law. You can do it. I ran into numerous officers. I had lieutenant, two detectives, and about two or three other officers. Didn't know the law. The previous chief, he's sitting right here, I was hoping, you know, when I came here to speak at a public hearing or a public meeting, I would, you know, you guys respectfully granted my wish about making a video. After that, the chief, Chief Gandy, that's sitting in the back, that's a coward, you know, decided he wanted to put his hands on me. And just like the police on that day put their hands on me, he put his hands on me, and then he got sworn in, and then everybody up here had a big old problem with me doing this. Here you are. I don't care. This is my First Amendment right. The First Amendment protects me doing this. If you don't like it, I don't care. That's not my problem, that's your problem. You swore an oath to defend what I'm doing right now. And for all these cops and all these people in here that want to look at me like I'm the bad guy, right here, I don't care about your friggin' feelings. My rights trump your feelings, all day, every day. These cops wanted to arrest me for doing nothing wrong. I was doing everything by the law, and they wanted to make me a criminal. If the 911 caller that called and didn't give my name, I was gladly going to Pinellas County Jail to do whatever they wanted to do with me for doing nothing wrong. I was abiding by the law. And I have a problem with this because all you council members decided to change an ordinance or whatever it was that granted this man to get his friggin' his pension or whatever it was. You guys got rid of that ordinance, and now he gets to get his pension and all the benefits, and he's the one, he likes to put hands on people that did nothing wrong. And just because you don't like what I have to say, that's the most ass... This is legal. ...asinine sentiment in my head. I can't, I can't understand why you would do that. Thank you very much. You know, some, every one of you put your hand up and said, just like they just did. And right now, I swear and affirm that I will uphold and defend the Constitution. And that's what you need to do.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Sure you leave your card down here on the stage.
Good evening, council. I turned my card in, and I thought I was going to be called. Oh, but I guess not, but here I am.
Can you state your name, please?
Glad, I'm going to give you that. My name is Gladys Andrews. I'm an owner and full-time resident of a condo on Sandkeep. I'm a retired building principal from a Long Island school in New York, where staff parents are very key to supporting any idea that may have an effect on the community. I'm currently a member of the Clearwater Charter Review Committee, and I'm trying to stay involved with our local politics. I'm also a Sunday school teacher for adults. And I share that with you because I'm going to share a story with you very shortly, and it will be brief, I've timed myself tonight. A major change in the current election system is being placed on the ballot without constituents having an opportunity to understand the impact of the change and what it really means. It appears that because this council is limited to five, a majority is three, and the majority are pushing through an agenda item that has not had an opportunity for the community which it affects to take a part of. If you remember the story of Moses and the children of the Israelites, how he sent 12 spies to check out the land of Canaan, two came back with a good report, 10, the majority, bad report. I share that with you because the majority was wrong in that case, and I believe the majority is wrong again tonight. Why are we proposing a change without feedback from the voters who it will affect? People will probably not get an opportunity to see this ballot referendum until they're called upon to vote on it. But there needs to be an opportunity for them to see how it affects them as we move forward. Based on the ballot referendum that's being proposed, or has been proposed, candidates would need 50% of the voter who are running for a council seat. Otherwise, it would be a runoff. To me, that means that anyone who's a part of that runoff would have to have monies to finance a second campaign. How does the lower-income candidate, who's interested in being on the council, how do they handle that second campaign? I thought it was your goal to have a diverse council. It appears with this referendum, that's not going to happen. So in short, my concerns center on no input from the public. So I'm curious to know what is driving, thank you, what is driving this? And does this narrow down the access to good candidates to those who can financially afford a first and second campaign? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Haluba, and I aggravate the thin-skinned Brian Ongst. Who is not here tonight, so I guess I won't be ejected. But I do see Mr. Stiff back there, in case I need to be ejected. The First Amendment exists precisely to protect all forms of expression from government suppression. It protects even the most offensive and controversial speech. It's even been said, "The best way to counter obnoxious speech is with more speech, not censorship." I have no doubt that my civil rights were violated at the last city council meeting when I was wrongfully ejected, and I trust that that is not going to happen again.
Mr. Fisherman, I understand you're making a point. I don't think you need to be standing there as a distraction.
If I'm blocking anybody, just let me know, and I'll move. I'm sorry, sir. I forgive you. I'll stand over here behind over here, so I don't block anybody.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Jonathan Wade. I live at 1312 North Madison Avenue, Clearwater, Florida. I am a lifelong Clearwater resident. I'm a pastor of a church in Clearwater, namely St. James African Methodist Episcopal Church in South Clearwater. Also a community activist with longstanding within the community. And I too am here to speak to the proposed 50% runoff and changing the election date. The reason that I'm speaking out against it because we're currently at the Charter Review Committee, and we're having some discussions, and we're going to have a discussion at our next meeting to talk about the feasibility for single-member districts and moving election dates and all those kind of things. And we wanted to bring a recommendation back to the council and for the council to pull the trigger so early without getting the input that's so validly needed to make that decision. I too am a believer in equality, equity, and fairness. And equality doesn't always mean equal. And as I look at the council, and I look at the hue of the council, there's never any representation that looks like people from my neighborhood and my community. And moving and adding more barriers, where we have to raise more money with limited resources for minority candidates that are trying to enter in this game, further unlevers the playing field, in my opinion. I hope that you guys really take a look at it and have more of a discussion. I hope that it's not already a sealed, signed, and delivered deal. There's a new council, there's an election that's going to be happening, we're going to have new council members. Why not allow that next council to bring that forward? Unless there's someone that's afraid that the balance of power may shift, where minds may prevail, where there may be some different concepts. So I'm just asking and letting you know that, one, that I think that, again, it's not fair. I don't think it's equitable. There's other cities of similar sizes that are not doing it in that particular manner. And the truth is, Mr. Bunker, you wouldn't be on the council had that might have happened, possibly. So I just want to just kind of put in my two cents, and I hope you guys consider it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council, and those who are present tonight. My name is Andrea Evans Dixon. I am a resident of Clearwater and a business owner, and I am standing tonight as well to speak against the discussion and the proposed change for the 50% rule. Let's just call it that. And I just stand tonight to maybe give a different take on it, and I want to back my statements tonight with data. When the discussion came up at the work session, I did not hear, and I may have missed it, but I did not hear any data behind why that should be. I did hear things like, "A city of our size, it's a long time past, we should have considered this long ago," but I didn't hear data. And so what I want to share tonight is just some things. From the March election in 2020, there were approximately 22,680 people that voted in Clearwater. The justification was, "Well, if we move it to August, there'll be more voters." And the data just does not support that because there was 22,002 people that voted in August of 2022. So bringing it closer to primary times and other dates in the year is just not supported. And so while about a third of the electorate in our city are NPAs, only 2,900, a little over 2,900 NPAs voted in that same election. That was only about 13% of the total number of votes. And so that makes that vote a little more partisan. And that's just data. It is what it is. And so along with some of the others that have spoken, I think we do need to, and the council owes it to us as the citizens, those that vote, to be sure that you are representing what the city as a whole would best benefit from. And it sounds as if things are maybe shifting, and maybe that's not the way things have been in the past. But if it's going to bring people to the council that better represent the city as a whole, then that's what we should keep it as. If not, then we go to districts, and then you'll get persons specifically from those areas at majorities that will represent those persons accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Patrick Raftery. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I thought I would try and clarify something that's been mentioned. I listened to that work session on Tuesday, and if I'm not mistaken, the proposal that was made is not going to go on the referendum until March of next year, at which point the voters will get a chance to decide if they would like to do that or not with respect to majority rule. I'm assuming between now and March, there'll be an awful lot of education on the part of people like myself and other voters as to whether we should go forward with this or not. In fact, council members may even speak on behalf of it, advocating for or against it, and help educate us as to why this is the right thing to be done for us to consider those facts before we vote on it. In addition to that, I believe if I'm not mistaken, if the referendum is passed by the residents, citizens of Clearwater, it doesn't take effect until the 2026 election, if I'm not mistaken. So it's not going to happen immediately. It's not even going to affect the next election at council. So I'm hoping that I'm correct with those assumptions, and maybe someone from the council can speak to that to assure the people who have the concerns, and their concerns are legitimate. I share some of those concerns. But it's not yet been voted upon. We will have a chance to be educated on it, and even if it passes by citizens, it will not take effect until 2026. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now normally, we wait until the end of the meeting to talk on any of the subjects brought up here, but because I wasn't here for the work session on Tuesday, I just wanted to share my feelings on the topic that I agree that it does limit who's going to have a real chance at winning. Money is important. And I heard people talking about the fact that if you've got support in the community, you'll be fine. But when it comes down to it, money is important. And again, Mr. Raftery is right. We'll be voting on it, so you'll have a say in that. So anyone else?
Hello, everyone. My name is, hey, everyone out here that showed up. My name is Dion Aristic. I've been living in Clearwater for the past seven years, and I've been coming here for the past 30, visiting my grandma. Recently, there's an ordinance to adopt the amending in the future land use plan, element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain unaddressed real estate property located on the north side of Tanglewood Drive. So I live adjacent to this property. If you guys haven't been, it's the last piece of untouched land in this county.
Is that on the agenda? I'm sorry, you're going to have to wait till that item comes up. That's actually on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not, this is my first time.
It's okay.
Thank you, I apologize.
You'll have a chance to...
I'll be back. I apologize, thank you.
Come on up here, and you can get a copy of the agenda so you can see where it's going to fall.
I think I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, let's move on to the consent agenda. Anybody on the council want to remove anything from the consent agenda, 7.1 through 7.19? No one, anyone from the audience like to remove any of these items? Hearing none, can I have a movement here to approve the consent agenda, 7.1 through 7.19?
Motion to approve agenda item 7.1 through 7.19.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay. Okay. Now, administrative public hearings, 8.1.
Approve that 2023 Affordable Housing Inventory List pursuant to requirements of Chapter 166.60451 Florida statutes, adopts Resolution 23-13, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you, Chuck Lane, Economic Development and Housing Department. Because we receive annual allocations of state housing initiative partnership program funding, we're required by state statute to produce a list of city-owned properties that are appropriate for use as affordable housing. Council must approve the list every three years. Council approved the list last year, but new legislation from the Live Local Act requires us to update this list, and council approved by October 1 of this year. We evaluated all city-owned and CRA-owned properties and determined which properties may be suitable for use as affordable housing. This year's list contains 31 parcels. Many of the parcels are adjacent to one another, so the 31 parcels make up 11 development sites. The only site on the list suitable for a single-family home, there's only one site on the list for a single-family home, and we're currently working through a competitive process to select a developer to build on that site. The remainder of the sites are suitable for multifamily development, some with and some without a commercial component. Three of the sites are in the downtown CRA, and the other eight sites are in the North Greenwood CRA, with six of them fronting the North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. Have me take questions.
Any questions, comments?
We have a resolution to be read.
Couldn't see all the way down the sightline. This is Resolution 23-13, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, determining the city holds fee simple title in and to 31 parcels of land lying and being situate within its corporate limits that are appropriate for use as affordable housing as defined in Section 166.0451 Florida statutes establishing an inventory listing of said parcels, providing an effective date.
Thank you. And questions, comments? I move to approve agenda 8.1.
Public comments first?
Public comments? Anyone wish to speak to this? All right, hearing none? Can we have a motion? Oh, we heard, got a motion, need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Pass? And now, second readings.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Ordinance number 9684-23 is first up, and that is an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain unaddressed real property located on the north side of Tanglewood Drive, approximately 675 feet west of Oak Creek Drive East in Clearwater, Florida, 33761, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Anyone wish to speak on 9.1? I'm sorry.
The, I believe the citizen is, this is the item that you were wanting to speak to?
So like, my letter that I received says ordinance 9691-23, so I don't see that specifically on this agenda, but I'm guessing that's this whole thing? With 91 and 92?
It should be 9.1.
Okay. So, again, sorry about stepping up earlier. It's my first meeting.
No, no problem.
So, thank you. So, the reason why I'm here is because I'm against the planning of this land. If you guys have, if you guys don't know about this land, you should Google it because it's the last piece that's untouched in this area. I hear owls, there's birds, exotic birds, it's just the last piece of land. Please, Google it, and you'll see it's the last piece of greenery in this county. Aside from, you know, I live adjacent to where they're planning on this building. I'm going to get the traffic and the noise, and, you know, I'm sure none of us would like that going on down our street while you're trying to rest. And it's basically here because I want you guys to leave the last wetlands alone and preserve this last piece. Either save it as a little park, it's attached to the State Street Park, which is a good place to Google the land. And if you haven't even been there, just take a walk through there. A lot of people in the neighborhood like to walk their dogs. It's peaceful. I believe, you know, it's removing it, it's going to make this area hotter, and it's just not going to help the overall city. I just want it to be heard. I'm definitely against it, and I hope that you guys are too. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments? Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to ask David Margolis, who owns this property?
I'll defer to Ms. Clayton on that, since the applications usually come in through planning. If planning is here, I probably will defer to her on the details of that, if that's okay with the council?
Good evening, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development. I believe it's the next-door property owner, and she, I think, represents the owner of the property.
So this is the one we discussed on perforating that had the driveway that was real steep?
Yes. That is it. So this property, we're not, we're just bringing it into the city via annexation. It's still going to have the residential plan category that it has in the county, and it's going to be zoned low-density residential.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Appreciate you showing up today. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.1, second.
All in favor?
You want to read it first? Or is there a second reading?
I think 9.2, we still would have to read the title for, which is the one we're discussing right now. So this is an ordinance number 9685-23, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city. No, we're still on 9.1. I did read 9.1. I apologize. Yeah, we already read it. My apologies.
Motion to approve agenda 9.1.
I have Councilmember Beckman first, and then seconded by Mr. Chair.
Yes. All right, so 9.2?
9.2, we have ordinance number 9685-23, and that is an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain unaddressed real property located on the north side of Tanglewood Drive, approximately 675 feet west of Oak Creek Drive East in Clearwater, Florida, 33761, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential estate, RE, and drainage feature overlay, providing an effective date.
Any questions or comments from the council? How about the audience? Anyone have any questions or comments? And please state your name. No, you're not, you're not. Oh, you're just taking a moment to move. Okay. All right, then, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.2.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? 9.3?
Item 9.3 is ordinance number 9686-23, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain unaddressed real property located on the north side of Tanglewood Drive, approximately 675 feet west of Oak Creek Drive East in Clearwater, Florida, 33761, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-density residential, LDR, providing an effective date.
Any comments, questions? Anyone from the audience? All right.
Move to approve agenda item 9.3?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? 9.4?
Item 9.4 is ordinance number 9694-23, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the west side of McCauley Road, approximately 790 feet southeast of Sunset Point Road, whose post office address is 1862 McCauley Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33765, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Any questions or comments? From anyone in the House? Hearing none? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.4, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? 9.5?
Item 9.5 is ordinance number 9695-23, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the west side of McCauley Road, approximately 790 feet southeast of Sunset Point Road, whose post office address is 1862 McCauley Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33765, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential estate, RE, and water, providing an effective date.
Any questions or comments? Anyone out there? Hearing none? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.5.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? And moving on to city manager reports. 9.6, I'm sorry, 9.6.
9.6 is ordinance number 9696-23, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the west side of McCauley Road, approximately 790 feet southeast of Sunset Point Road, whose post office address is 1862 McCauley Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33765, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-density residential, LDR, providing an effective date.
Any comments or questions on 9.6? Anyone like to speak to it? Hearing no one? Can I have a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 9.6?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And now, moving on to city manager reports.
10.1, appoint 11 members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, including Councilmember Kathleen Beckman as a locally elected official, and adopt Resolution 23-12.
Test?
Okay. Again, Chuck Lane, Economic Development, Housing Department. As a recipient of state housing initiative partnership program funding, again, we are required by state statute to assemble an affordable housing advisory committee every year. The committee is tasked with reviewing land use policies such as ordinances, regulations, zoning, development standards, and anything else that the city has in place that might affect the cost of developing housing, residential development. The city's objective is to identify potential barriers and incentives that might impact a developer's decision to build affordable housing. We use the committee's input annually to update our local housing incentive strategy. Staff will ask council to accept that strategy report in December at the conclusion of the committee's work. The committee is comprised of 11 members. Seven of the seats are filled by members of our current Neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Three of the remaining four seats are filled by people meeting specific criteria according to the state statute. Of those three members, one is an essential services representative, one is a residential home builder, and one represents the local planning agency, which is a member of the CDB. The remaining seat must be filled by a member of city council. Councilmember Beckman filled the role last year, but council is required to make the appointment each time the committee is seated. So I'll take questions, please.
Questions, comments? I'd just like to thank Councilmember Beckman for stepping up again. I can't think of anybody better to be sitting on this board. So, resolution?
Thank you. Resolution number 23-12, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, appointing the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, just call the committee, in accordance with Florida Statute Section 420.9076 and required for purposes of the State Housing Initiative's partnership program, providing that the city's Neighborhood and Affordable Housing Advisory Board, the NAHAB, among several other individuals, shall serve as said committee, appointing existing NAHAB members to the committee, appointing additional members to the committee in accordance with Section 2.228 Code of Ordinances of the City of Clearwater, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 11.1, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? 10.2?
Confirm the declaration of a state of emergency due to conditions surrounding Tropical Storm Idalia and adopt Resolution 23-16.
Good evening. Javon Graham, Division Chief of Emergency Management. This is to confirm the declaration of emergency we have around the conditions supporting Hurricane Idalia and help us recover those findings that are a result of that.
Any questions? Can we hear the resolution, please?
Yes. Resolution number 23-16, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, confirming a declaration of a state of emergency and establishing emergency procurement procedures, establishing emergency employee work schedules, providing an effective date.
Very good. Anyone from the audience? Javon, thank you for your work and all the folks who help whenever there's an emergency like that. You do a great job. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 11.2.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Item 10.3, appoint two individuals to the Community Development Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term through February 28, 2026, and one through April 30, 2026. Councilmembers, there are two vacancies currently on the board. We have the following individuals that have been presented at the work session. Applications were received by the following individuals who have the desired professional backgrounds, and that would be Nicholas Anderson, Kurt Henrich, Edward Wilms, and Michael Bootsikis. And we also received applicants from the following citizens who either have expressed an interest or have previously served on the board but do not have the professional backgrounds, and that would be Rebecca Irvin, Bill Johnson, and Polly Ward.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this because the mayor's not here. Can we do that on our next meeting?
If it's continued, yes, we can do that. If it's continued to the next meeting, if that is a motion, but it wouldn't need to be seconded and voted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's continued anyway. So because there's only four, are we correct? We would need to have a, the city attorney saying it would be continued to the next meeting, so it'll be on the next agenda.
All right, just if I could, if I could, Vice Mayor, just to elaborate on that. So our current council rules are set up, as with most cities, where at least three affirmative votes are required to take any action. And so if there are fewer than three affirmative votes, no item can pass. The question then is, what happens next procedurally? If there is a 2-2 split per our council rules, it constitutes an automatic continuance to the next meeting, and so it will, per council rules, automatically come back to be reconsidered at the next meeting. Some cities don't do it that way. Some cities say that if a motion fails 2-2, then it simply dies on the vine, but Clearwater is set up to put it back on the next agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion to continue? 10.3?
So move.
No, it automatically continues.
Oh, it automatically does? Okay.
Residents speaking.
City attorney reports.
But we do have an individual who wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I have once again submitted, I am Bill Johnson. I'm one of the members that have submitted an application. And because it's been done again, I wanted to expand on some of the information that's in the application. The Community Development Board is required to operate under quasi-judicial review process just like this council. I'm well aware of the quasi-judicial process from my time serving on the city council. Accordingly, when I was a member on the council, I voted for the majority of the big projects on Clearwater Beach. Others were approved either before or after I served on the dimes. Again, I noted I voted for the majority of the big projects on Clearwater Beach, not because I liked the individual developers, but because the application complied with the code. During the last couple of years, I have attended and observed most of the monthly Development Review Committee meetings and most of the Community Development Board meetings. As part of my role with the Clearwater Neighborhood Coalition, I review and summarize... As part of my role with the Clearwater Neighborhood Coalition, I review and summarize the project, uh, public meeting notifications that come up on the agenda for both of these groups, so I know the process. Your January Matrix Consulting Report made several recommendations for process improvement. I hope that the community development board can provide input into that process to improve the development review procedure, both for the applicants and for the surrounding community. Charlie Seaman, when he wrote the 1999 New Clearwater Development Code, reported that Clearwater had unlimited redevelopment opportunity. As such, the code was written to allow flexibility for quality redevelopment that fit. The Community Development Code has provisions to implement that goal. The CDB has the responsibility to ensure that those provisions are fully followed, benefiting the property owner, the business community, and the neighboring residential communities, along with the city as a whole. I want to work with you and the rest of the community development board to see Clearwater become the best city in Florida. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Uh, so, we move to continue this? 10.3?
Actually, the city manager has a report.
I have one additional item. Um, as you know, our meeting last night had to be canceled due to an unexpected emergency condition that occurred at the library, um, and as such, I need to ask council tonight, um, for permission to have a special budget meeting on the 28th.
All right. So.
Yes.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Yep. I think, I think the ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, city attorney reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Before I talk about 12.1, I just wanted to add to the city manager's comments and just say that, uh, there were some pretty extraordinary circumstances yesterday that were quite unexpected. Dealing with last-minute building challenges are never easy when we're anticipating public meetings, but yesterday was especially challenging because it's our Milich hearing, and that creates additional statutory challenges. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the city manager, to Assistant City Manager Slaughter, to Mr. Maxwell, to Caitlin Castle, and the rest of our staff, who I think did a tremendous job yesterday under extraordinarily unexpected circumstances. These are things that no one can prepare for, and, uh, you know, the, the public ultimately gets a notice that says, "We're rescheduling," uh, but they don't get to see the scampering behind the scenes as we're contacting the Department of Revenue, as we're reaching out to other partners, uh, and trying to do the right thing, um, in accordance with Florida law and for the public. So I just wanted to say thank you to the manager and staff for getting us through that. Uh, if I can, 12.1, uh, is the order of business the council had requested. Um, this is resolution 23-14. I think I'll just read the resolution title first, if that's okay. This is a resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending council rules, providing an effective date. This is the portion of the resolution which would advance the agenda items to an earlier point in the agenda, but happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions? I'm personally not crazy about, uh, uh, putting citizens to be heard at the end, uh, but I understand the importance of getting the staff, uh, back to their homes. So, all in favor? Oh, oh, we have a resolution?
It, it is a resolution, which I've read, but a motion would have to be made if council is still interested in moving this item forward.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
No.
All in motion?
Can you open it up for public comment?
The public comment can be either before or after a motion, whichever, whichever the, the chair prefers, but public comment is required prior to voting, and it's up to the chair whether you'd like to take that comment either now or after a motion is made, whichever you prefer.
All right. Uh, well, uh, I think there are probably people who want to speak to this. Anyone care, come on up to the microphone.
I am Italian, my English is not good, please stay patient with me. I am signed, is here in this country, I receive special visa from high qualification, special in security national code, uh, for, for transfer my technology this country, it's my new country, in Clearwater Beach, you are the mayor, is in this moment, my home. Basically, uh, my request is very simple. We, the person at the back of me, Italian person, I'm rock people, want investing for start 400 millions euros for create a submarine of underwater, short underwater. I send this information, the governor of Florida, at the mayor, by email, a lot of people here inside, and Mr. Rubio in the United States. Maybe it's incredible, but we have the technology for create this project. I have the picture here, if you give to me authorization, mayor, I send to you the picture here, see you, it basically, the point is.
Excuse me, this is, uh, not part of this agenda, uh, and those comments should have come at the beginning of the meeting, uh, but thank you so much. Uh, could you, if you haven't, could you fill out a card?
Only mayor, you are very bright person, you have the power to convert this, this song into number one worldwide, only listen to me one minute no more, it's a record.
I'm, I'm sorry, we, uh, we have to follow the rules and, um, the time for that was the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. On it, give a second.
No, no, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, you know, I, I wish I could, but we have to go with the rules. That's it. Thank you. Sorry. All right. Uh, have we read the motion?
The resolution has been read. If council would like to move the item forward, then a motion would be required.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 12.1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay. Uh, 11.2.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, so this is resolution 23-15, a resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending council rules, providing an effective date. Um, as the council knows, uh, these are requests, uh, that have been made, um, by the council as well as some members of the public, uh, to revise our decorum rules. Um, I did, I think for context, and I hope it's helpful, attach the rules from the county commission, as well as the rules from the Pinellas County School Board, um, because I wanted both the public as well as, uh, this council to see some of the comparison language, um, but happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I didn't have a, a chance to talk about this at the work session. I'm not in favor of, of, uh, putting any restrictions on free speech. Uh, I, I think it's important, but, um, uh, I understand everyone's feelings here. Anyone else care to talk about it tonight? Okay. If, anyone in the audience?
I have a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't going to make a comment, but, you know, um, I'm going to make a comment on this. And, uh, you know, it's not that we have thin skin up here. We're here to, to perform a meeting, city business. I don't care if you want to go out and yell obscenities outside, it's not going to affect me, but if it affects the meeting, that's, this is a special meeting, and we can set the parameters on what we want to hear in that meeting instead of going on and on and on monetizing YouTube videos. It's not the business of the city of Clearwater. Okay? So, I know he'll probably cut that and show up, I'll show up on his video with a, a gun to my head or something, but, uh, you know, we're here to perform business, and it's nothing to have anything to do with free speech. Go outside, you can talk all you want to, and you can jump up and down and do the one-finger salute as much as you want, but in here, it really disturbs us trying to take care of city business, so that's all I wanted to say. Has nothing to do with thin skin, has nothing to do with, because we don't want to hear bad words. I can tell you, I sit out here and I look at the audience, people that want to come up, like these, this couple right here, and they have to listen to that? It puts people off that want to come up and actually say something that has to do with city business. So, I just wanted to get that out there and be very clear about it. That's all, that's my comment.
I appreciate it. Anyone else? Uh, we, public comments now or after the motion?
Whichever the, whichever the vice mayor prefers.
Well, right now.
After Craftery, once again, resident of Clearwater for 44 years, I'm one of the residents who spoke with respect to some offensive behavior that I saw at one of the sessions. It was very offensive to me. It diminished the moment of the oath of office being applied to our chief of police in the city of Clearwater. And as I have said before, I have no objection to people disagreeing very strongly with decisions that a mayor presents that are happening. However, I do believe there's a way to do it in a civil and reasonable manner without offending people. I do not agree that free speech is universal without limits. If I'm not mistaken, I'm thinking back to legal things I learned about long ago, the Supreme Court Justice Learned Hand himself said, "Free speech does not allow you to holler fire in a theater." There are limitations to it. We only ask that it be done in a civil manner, disagree in a civil manner, no personal attacks, and I believe the council can adopt rules of decorum and conduct that will be in compliance with the free speech article that we have. And if it's necessary for it to be tested in a court of law, so be it, but I don't think that is necessary. I'm reminded of an admonition I was given many years ago as a young man by my father, and he said to me, Patrick, he said, "In life, try and practice what I call Irish diplomacy." And that is the art of telling someone to go to hell where they get excited and look forward to the visit. It's all in the way you speak about it. And I'm just encouraging people to disagree, but do it in a civil, non-offensive manner. Free speech is definitely not universal, and things will offend most of the residents of this city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, can we hear them? The, uh, the, the resolution?
The resolution has been read.
Oh, it has?
If the council, uh, would like to move it forward, then it would require a motion.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve agenda item 12.2.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye? So, uh, three to one with Vice Mayor Bunker abstaining?
Uh, you, you may not abstain.
Oh.
Yeah, you did have to vote.
Voting, uh, voting.
Opposed?
Voting opposed, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. And that brings us to closing mem, uh, closing comments from council members. Why don't we start over here with Councilmember David Albritton?
I don't have a lot to say. Um, I think I've said it all, so I'll let, uh, Councilmember Tashada say what she needs to say.
Councilmember Tashada.
I would like to begin by recognizing and thanking all the city staff who worked tirelessly, uh, and with such professionalism before, during, and after the Hurricane Idalia. Thank you for all your work and being great custodians of this beautiful city. Second, I would like to, uh, congratulate all the Clearwater Fire Rescue Recruit Class 27, to the Clearwater family. I want to specifically congratulate, uh, each and every one, Sean Binion, Fisher Davis, Docho Flores, Joey Giomanti, Jose Quenos, Tristan Robey, Mike Sudak, Nick Stedman, William Thomas, and Zachary Watts, to, um, to the first responders' family. I'm also very excited to have formalized the addition of Ix Miquilipan as Clearwater's second sister city. I enjoyed meeting all the dignitaries and thoroughly enjoyed the ceremony and the following celebration. Mi gustaría de la bienvenida formal a la mediaosa gente de Ix Miquilipan, a nuestra familia, Clearwater. Espero profundizar esa preciosa relación y algún día tratar también a su fiesta natal. Last but not least, I was actually present when we heard of what was going on in the library, and I witnessed firsthand how this city's, um, leadership dealt with such, um, last-minute, I would call it emergency, and the professionalism and, uh, work ethic that I saw was really, really impressive. No one was stressed out, no one was, um, hesitating, everyone worked as a team, and I saw that firsthand, so, uh, thank you so much for being so responsive and professional in, um, in a challenging time.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckman.
Well, thank you. I would wholeheartedly second what Councilmember Tashada has communicated as well. I wanted to thank our amazing staff for truly rolling with the punches, um, from Hurricane Idalia to the broken sprinkler system yesterday in the third, second or third floor of our main library. People reacted quickly and appropriately, and they adapted and continued the work and served us to our residents. So I'm really proud of that collaboration, and just wanted to say a sincere thank you to Ruth Eckert Hall for allowing us to use this beautiful Capitol Theater tonight and doing all they can to prepare us for this meeting. It's, um, much appreciated. Just hope everyone has a great weekend. The Market Marie is downtown this weekend, it's a Saturday, it's a fun little market to attend, and, um, that's about it.
Thank you. Uh, a, and again, uh, I thank Ruth Eckert Hall and, uh, all of our staff who do a spectacular job. Uh, this afternoon, actor Danny Masterson was sentenced to 30 years to life in, in a rape case, uh, in LA, and, uh, no joy in that, his, his wife and his family are distraught, understandably. Uh, a big part of the, um, trial was Scientology's involvement, and now that this, uh, criminal case is solved, there's going to be a civil case with the three women who had been raped. Uh, and the harassment, it's going to, uh, talk about the harassment of Scientology, uh, over the years against these women for daring to, uh, talk to the police. And Scientology will tell you they don't have rules about, um, members not reporting crimes to the police, but they do, they're written down, and you can point to them. Uh, i- it's nice to see some justice, uh, in a courtroom, and it will be nice to see, uh, Scientology be held to the same, uh, same standards. All right. Uh, with that, uh, we are through for today. Thank you.